Call to order the first meeting of the 2019 Parkland Select Board is Wednesday, January 2nd, 6:30. Okay, take a look at the agenda. Are there any items on the agenda that need to be changed, modified, moved around? Anyone can see it this time?
I'm concerned.
All right, then we will follow the agenda. The next item is scheduled members of the public. We have no scheduled members of the public invited this evening. We do have unscheduled member of the public and if you could please give your -- oh, hi Mark. If you could please give your name ma'am and you can...
Martha Werman.
Martha Werman. And Martha, what can we do for you this evening?
I probably should come next week for the issue about the...
Logging?
Logging.
Oh, yes. Next week on, if you notice down under item 13A, Andy Shear is going to be coming to discuss the logging that has occurred on the board's property. But you're welcome to, if you wanted to share anything right now, you're welcome to.
Just say that they're coming a little early in the morning now. I saw one go loaded down till at 7:00.
Loaded.
That means he came up at 6:00.
All right, all right. Well, welcome to stay from the meeting and we will be addressing, hearing about the process of logging. I need to become more informed myself on that process. But we are thinking, we are developing a logging policy.
Great.
So, all right. All right, thank you Martha. Right?
Right.
Okay, my seat. All right, we shall move down to the approving the minutes from the meeting, from the minutes of December 19th, 2018. We'll start on page 1 of 5. Are there any items to change on page 1 of 5? I saw none. We shall move to page 2 of 5.
What's it to me?
We shall move on to page 3 of 5. Any items on here? I'm just nannying myself. We shall move to page, I'll have to make one point on page 3 of 5. I did send out the email to the listserv about the, about the policy and people were reading it before Guy got in at 6 o'clock in the morning, before Guy even got in to post it. So, that listserv does work quite well. All right, page 4 of 5. Any questions or changes from page 4 of 5?
Nope.
Okay. And page 5 of 5. Okay. Hearing now, I'm between a motion to approve the minutes as submitted. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted for the December 19th, 2018 Select Board meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dave. Any discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor of approving the minutes from the December 19th meeting as submitted, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Okay, we unanimously. Next, we'll go into the 2019-2020 budget discussion. And we have a couple of items here. Any changes to line items? I'm not aware of any changes to any of the line items that we have submitted in the past. Samara can't come until later on. If you wanted her to come tonight, she can give her a call at home, but not, she's not available this time of the, right now. If you had been an hour, she would be.
I think it is, sorry Guy.
No, she, that was, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say that one thing that I know we had talked about before maybe possibly being something that, that could change is the WS, WMD landfill fees that's on page 5. That's, that has been approved now.
Oh, right. I didn't get it printed out.
So, that, that is set. And then, so the number we have there is good and won't change.
That number that he gave us is the same number that that was approved?
Yeah.
Okay. I did get the email from him with everything approved on it. All right, I brought it with us. So, the landfill.
I guess the only thing I, that I thought we're still possibly waiting for confirmation on is the wind of regional commission dues.
I haven't seen that yet.
So, that's, but, I mean, it may be that we just have to go with the 1,200 estimate that we've...
Right. I'll make, I'll make that point to Samara in an email about the dues item. All right, we can move down to B, the surplus. Samara suggested that since the auditors are currently working on reviewing the treasurer reports, that while she's very confident in what she submitted, there might be some need to change. So, she would rather us to hold off on item 6B discussing any surplus or until a later time. Because she doesn't know if the auditors are gonna modify that number. Bruce, which one's that?
Yeah, I just want to clarify what we can do and what we can't do with that surplus. The way I understand it is they either put it to the town to vote if they want to get rid of it by giving it back to taxpayers, or it could be put in a fund selected by the select board. But it has, something has to be done with it. It can't just sit there. Is that the question you're standing on?
And I'm not, I believe so. And I believe the select board determines what to do and how to proceed with the, with the funds.
But it can't be left as a surplus.
Right.
The surplus has to be recharged.
It has to be disbursed back to the taxpayers or dedicated to a fund that the select board decides on or asks the voters to approve on.
They have to approve on the fund?
Yeah. In other words, we can't hold over the deficit.
Right, but I'm saying...
I mean, I'm sorry, the surplus, if there is one.
Right, but I'm saying if this, if the select board chooses to make a fund, whether it's a maintenance fund or whatever, and we put the $20,000 in there, it still has to be voted out by the town?
It would have to be, it'd be an article. The article has to say, what will the town do with the surplus? Shall it return it to the voters or shall it be dedicated to, funded for, or whatever?
Okay.
So, if anybody has any ideas for moving or dealing with the surplus, I guess we need to reach ducks in a row and make a presentation at next, the next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to know for sure that what surplus is we have.
Right.
That'll be helpful.
Right.
It sounds like a floating thing though, that's not...
I think the auditors will come up with the line up number with after they review it and everything. And they're working again on this coming Sunday. So, all right. Next we'll go on to item 6C, discuss the wheeled excavator purchase loan. Our vote, Guy, you did some footwork on this and...
Yeah, that's the language that the VLCT, it's pretty germane. It's just basically, you know, shall the town spend X amount of dollars for the, appropriate X amount of dollars toward that? And then again, we would have to incorporate the amount of down payment and so forth and what it would cost the town, which is basically, you know, an article that we would have to craft.
Right. Would you...
The asking price was $94,000 and the Vermont, the Vermont Treasurers Association would, would support a loan, but only 75% of the purchase price. So, the town would have to come up with 25%. Now, in my further negotiations with the company in Albany, they are willing to take the $7,000 that we, whatever we paid for the lease last summer and apply it toward the down payment. So, let's just say for giggles, it's $6,000. So, the down payment on $94,000 would be 23.5 minus $6,000. So, the town would have to come up with an additional $17,000 for the down payment. And then, the town will have to approve the loan for a five year term of, what does that come out to? 25, I'm sorry, 23 from 94 leaves what? $70,000? Somewhere around round figures.
Guy, could I ask you to plug in those numbers in words and have it in a hard copy?
Oh, sure, sure.
At the next meeting so that we can...
Yeah, I'll give you a...
I would like to actually put it in the agenda.
Okay.
And this way it will be out there and for us to agree to put it on as an article. Yes, sir?
$17,000 down, we're gonna get it.
Right. We have funds in the highway fund, you know, again. And then it was also talk of maybe some of the surplus might be used for that. I mean, there's a lot of different things that they're thinking about. You know, it's entirely up to you guys. You're the folks who are, you know, the financial gurus.
Do we know what is available from the highway fund to, I mean, that could be, I think probably for most of us, the first option would be to pay that down payment out of existing...
The reason I'm hedging on that is because there's a little bit of a decision to be made with the auditors. And before I speculate, I would like to get the auditors their firm numbers so that we can know exactly what we're talking about.
Right, that's why if we could have, yeah, sorry.
But again, and that was part of the conversation, that the, the machine would probably more than likely pay for itself in the $39,000 that we have towards summer, whatever it is, I don't know Mark, the $39,000.
Contract services?
Yes, right.
So, we can take it from that?
No, not the down payment. The payment, the loan payment would be approximately $1,500 a month if I remember right. So, $15 a month, $1,500 a month times, times 12.
I'll wash you. Can you back up a little?
Okay. The, the $39,000 that we have budgeted in the highway fund for contract services, a lot of that is equipment that we rent.
Right.
We would not have to rent that equipment.
Right.
So, the amount that the loan would be, $1,500 a month, approximately $1,500 a month for that machine would come out of that. So, basically, it would, it would be close to a wash. And again, this is, you know, you're, it's hard to determine what's gonna happen.
For one year, 15 to 18.
Well, yeah, each year, each year, we spend, we spend 20.
$18,000.
We spend $20,000 to $25,000 a year on rental equipment.
Roughly, okay.
So, the $1,500 a month, if you times that by 12, should offset what we're paying for the rental. And in five years, we would own it. And the other thing is that we control our own destiny. And the last part of it is that if the town elects to rent out that machine for a month, they have that option too. So, there's a lot of things you can do with that machine. And again, it's up to the voters whether they want or not. Or if the select board wants to present it to the voters, I'm sorry.
This isn't something the select board makes a decision on. This is something that has to be placed to, to the voters, correct?
We're gonna place it to the voters, but I wanna make sure that, that the select board is really clear on what we're placing to the voters so if we can have any...
The select board has to be on board before we present it to the voters.
Right, right.
Right. And obviously, the defraying, the offsetting the costs of the loan out of what we are already planning to budget for contract services makes sense. We just then, separately, we do need to figure out where the $17,000 to $18,000 down payment would come from.
Probably have to do a little...
That's something we have to...
Little configuration, line item addition in, in the highway fund, which is...
And this would be discussed as they, when they read the article, then it's up for discussion and...
Right, but before, before we present the article, you have to have your ducks in order so that you can present the article and in, in a way that people understand and know what, what they're voting for.
Exactly, exactly. All right, good.
I just add to the possibility that depreciation by the time you can get around to inquiring on the machine. Other towns may have rented it, so the price possibly...
Would go down a little further?
Did come down a little.
Have we worked them on, excuse me, the sales term? Have you worked them on the price at all?
I've been, I got the lease agreement to, you know, be used as a down payment. I didn't wanna really press anything because we didn't have a total commitment yet.
Correct.
But he did say to me in my last conversation two weeks ago that they were holding the machine, they would wait for the town meeting, and then when we decide what we wanna do, we would go forward with what they wanna do. So, yes, there's always wiggle room. But that machine is also a machine that's in high demand. So...
What's the asking price again, excuse me?
$94,000.
Exactly. Okay.
Okay, well, thank you Guy.
Yeah, yeah, another thing. Any question on what the value of it is?
I haven't gotten that...
Is there a book value on it?
I haven't gotten that far, but like I say, just in the grass cutting, which we spend $5,000 or $6,000 a year on, we would be just saving money on that because...
Yeah, I understand, I understand that.
Oh, and I don't know, I don't know.
The value of the unit, is it worth 120,000 dollars? Is it worth 70,000? Like when you go and you take the car in, your car's worth...
Yes, right.
15,000 miles on it's worth X amount of dollars. I just wanna know if they're...
When we get, when we get to that point, that will be part of the...
You didn't push that, okay.
That's where we'll know how many hours on the machine. But the machine itself, I think we came out what was $270,000 for a new one.
Somewhere 273 or...
Yeah, so that's a new one.
And this is how old?
This is 2011, I believe. But in good shape. According to Mark, looked it over pretty carefully.
Low hours, you know.
Low hours.
It hasn't been overused yet.
It looked nice. It didn't look abused.
No, it's still pretty good shape.
How do the pedals look? This is a stupid question, but this, you know, this is an indication of how it's gonna...
Right.
Have a truck at home, I can justify that.
After running it for an entire month, you know, figured out pretty much everything. And everything seems, appeared to be in really good shape. You know, it is a rental machine, so I can't say how it was operated previous, but it, everything functioned very well.
And what new when you were driving it?
Yeah, it's still, 2,000 hours is, you know, just a break in period.
And there's room in the shed?
Yeah, it fits into second grader.
Not all about guys driving.
Well, I have to put my car in there now.
We maybe could talk to Town of Newfane. I know Town of Newfane rented it after we did to get a little input from them to see how they liked it.
Dumiston, did Dumiston also rent it?
I don't think they got to use it yet unless they were gonna go after Newfane, but being wintertime, they may not have decided to use it.
And if we choose to buy, we have maybe put out there that we're interested in leasing it out here and there.
Yeah, go look at the options.
We'd have to, yeah, I think we'd have to seriously look at it, whether that is a good idea.
Yeah, we don't, we don't, I swear.
I could set Guy before our next meeting and we could put our heads together on, on some of this stuff that we're talking about.
Yeah, you can give him a call. We can give him a call and see. You know, right now it's a little speculation because we don't know what the town is gonna do. And the bottom line is that it's a machine that's in high demand. So, as far as too much wiggle room, I'm, I'm not sure. But you don't know unless you ask.
Okay, I'll put that down on the agenda for the next meeting to talk a little bit more about the wheeled excavator and, and any updates that you might have. That would be great, Mark.
Sure.
Thank Guy, thank you. Anything else?
I mean, the thing we need to remember of course is at the next meeting, we are going to have to vote on articles.
Yes.
Right.
So, we will have to have all of the exact numbers.
That's right, it's time.
I will work on it the next...
We want to put into this. And I agree with Guy that though we might ultimately, when it comes time, assuming we move forward with it to purchase it, we might be able to negotiate a little bit. I think it's probably the safest thing is to proceed with the wording of the article from what we know now.
Exactly.
Because that's all, that's all we can go with.
And then we can amend it at town meeting.
Exactly.
We can always amend it.
Especially if the price goes down.
Right, no one's gonna have a problem with that.
All right, gentlemen, thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to town report booklet. I know Chris had sent out an email looking for reports. I did send to him almost at the same time he sent out my select board's report, which I, which had some edits and things on it. So, if anybody wants to look at it, I think what I'm putting in for the town, for the select board, it's available here in hard copy. Chris has got the other copy. And the supervisor has, what else?
Chris and I need to sort of, or I need to start to put the stuff together and start to figure that out. Which I will do over the next few weeks.
Quinn and I submitted our reports today. So, we're all up to speed.
I also still need to, which is on my list of things to do, reach out to Springfield Printing and just get some revised pricing on what I think will be the page, likely page count now that we're eliminating, all the various things we're eliminating. But anyway, so that's, there should be more of an idea by then. But I mean, really, what basically happens is, once we vote on all of the articles and the auditors have finalized everything about the financial stuff, I mean, it basically gets put together at the end of January and then gets produced at the beginning of February. So, it can be mailed
within a...
20,000 days or however many days it is.
Well, just shout out if you need, I'm not planning any trips, if you need any extra help, get my sister to help. She's light enough to... All right, anything else about the town report booklet? Anybody'd like to share?
Julie Lavoria will be very happy not to have to ignore the typos in the school stuff since we won't be printing these.
Yes.
Because that was rife with mistakes.
Was it?
But we couldn't do anything about it because they were all just supplies to the stuff. Anyway.
All right. Well, we gotta take a break now because you are ahead of schedule? No. All right.
Don't even joke about that.
Just say hi.
Cocky army?
All right, town clerk, Mr. Guy Tanza, what's new in the town?
Just to let people know that the dog licensing period has started, January 1st. We're all set, we're all ready to license any dogs that people wish to license. They have until, I believe it is April 1st to license their dog before they inherit a fine or a penalty. And the rabies clinic, we have not been able to determine a date yet because the doctor wasn't available. But we will send out an email prior to that rabies clinic over at the New Brook Fire Department.
Usually it's in March at some point.
Yeah, usually it's always in March. Yes, that's absolutely true.
Has been the first Thursday, Saturday of March.
All right, but you haven't gotten confirmation on that. Anything else, Mr. Tanza?
Uh, no, we've made most of the 2019 changes in the website. We've made the changes on the bulletin boards. So, the town is pretty much up to speed for the 2019 period. And we're looking forward to a good year.
I saw on the town, on the website, Santa Claus going over your backyard. It's your house, right, in that picture?
Yes.
Yeah, that was good. So, that was nice. All right, so we shall move down to highways and roads. And Guy, you can change your hat. Road commissioner, what update do you have, if any?
The, I don't recall, to be honest, because it's been quite a while since we last spoke. But I, I don't recall if I mentioned the fact that the shoulder work was done at the new culvert. And that was, I badgered Matt a little bit, even though we had paid him. And that, you know, they were behind because of weather and I wasn't gonna let some shoulder work stop on $90,000 payment. But he did fulfill his promise and he did do the shoulder work there. The only thing we're waiting for now is the word from Lafayette in regards to the guardrails, because we feel that that's an unsafe spot and it should be somehow taken care of. Other than that, everything's running good. The salt is good, Mark?
We have, I threw the load of salt in our shed and I called for an order on Monday. Should be here any time.
I saw a couple of truckloads of sand going by today.
Yes, also the sand shed was refilled today.
Okay, good.
And that, again, it was getting quite low and...
Did you take a look at the sand and...
Yep, it's the same good quality of sand that we had in the fall. And it's been solid as it is.
Do we have sand in the resident end of it? You know where we have, okay.
Yes, we do.
Because again, we're gonna have some in cleaner weather over the weekend and...
Right, yep. No, there's plenty of sand in there.
Okay.
All right, Mark, so now, you're on Rubros Road Supervisor. What would you like to share with us? Anything that you would like to tell the board?
Well, in my checks on the roads, I noticed there's a few potholes that have occurred on Athens Road and some on Parker Road. And I talked to the plow guys about what to do and I asked if they would recommend our sand from the sand shed in the holes. But if it rains, it just tends to squish right back out. So, I've made arrangements to get a load of three-quarter inch crush foam. It's small enough to fill the hole and stay in place and hoping that...
Until, until the weather in the spring.
So, I have to make a call first thing in the morning to set up the schedule. And if it, depending on the weather, we may do it tomorrow to try and fill over some of the deeper potholes. If we get snow, the snow may fill in some of it. But I was gonna at least try and fill some and if not, have a load of this material stopped filed at the shed and I can displace when we get another occurrence of pothole. I've made some phone calls about, I missed a couple meetings, but I've made phone calls to, about the guardrails, paving, and estimating some tree work. And I, I don't have the numbers for you tonight. My call was for return and I didn't get to speak with the chief's pole and I called back and didn't get to speak. So, little phone gag, but I'll try to have something for the next meeting.
Anything else then?
You know, we've had some windstorms and some heavy ice. And again, I think Parkland tends to make out a little better than some of the towns. I don't know if it's because we're low elevation, but some of the towns around us have had a lot of, you know, power outages from the ice. And I think we ended up with more rain than ice than towns in Moretz, Prolet, Newfane, Jamaica. So, I went around a couple weeks ago and trimmed up a few pieces that were still in the road. The plow guys were able to push most of what we had off to the side, but I trimmed up a little bit. And there'll be a lot of stuff to clean up when the snow finally melts in the spring. But other than that, I think the roads are holding up decent. And I hadn't, hadn't heard of anything else that needs looking at, so...
Do you, let me ask, I have two things. First of all, I'm knocking on wood because I think that the tree work that you supervise with Henry Carr and Green Mountain Power the past 18 months really has saved us from power outages. I think that you're in a really good situation in that respect.
Yeah, thank you. I believe that was a big improvement. And it also opened the roads up too, as well as the roadside mowing. You know, a lot of these were slowly dilapidating down, making road hazards. So, I think that was a money well spent.
So, let me ask you this. When we do have weather, is, do you have, thank you for checking the roads. I think that's important. I know you don't live in town right now and you're coming over from Ward, Spurrow. But so, I appreciate that because otherwise we'd be dying our drive around. I'm sure, I'm sure you'd do anyone because I don't...
I have a plow in front of my truck.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know there's a lot of times when I do get here, there's somebody who has pushed stuff out of the road.
I have.
And the clerks have and Guy. And so, I put a thank you out there to a lot of different ones. And, but usually if, if I know it's a storm, I will check and come out. If it's a hurricane or hard winds, there's always at least one issue. So, I, I do, and I hear back a lot from the, the plow guys, you know, when they're on the roads plowing, if they see something, they'll call me. So, that's been really helpful. So that's been really helpful.
Anything else, Mark?
Uh, no, I think that's it.
Okay, we can move along, Road Commissioner. Okay, new business. Under new business A, Dear Run Nature Preserve, sent us an email last month. It was not on the agenda, but they have requested a letter of support from the Select Board for the work that they're doing conserving 287 piece acre, piece of land in Deverston and 40 acres in the Brookline area. It's called the Wilson Property. I've read through their application and go look at their video online. I don't know if anybody else was able to do that.
I did, yeah, I looked at their stuff.
What's the question of the board?
I think it, I think it is, seems like a really great project and...
I thought it was very well done, I think the communication that they had in their presentation. So with the Select Board's approval, yes, sir?
I just wanted to add something and I don't mean it to be a flying ointment, but the bottom line is, most of our ridge lines here in Brookline are now in a conserved state of being, which in essence, what it means is that it cuts down our tax base. Our tax base is diminished by these lands that pay minimal taxes or in land use. So I, I understand the need for recreation and preserving our forests, but I also realize that our, I've watched our grant lists go from 77 million down to $69 million. And what that means is that's what we share our taxes with. That's how much money we have to share our tax burden with. So I, I just, I don't, I just wanted to throw that out there. I want people to be aware that we lost a quarter million dollars in valuation last year because of some, some land purchasing and land givings away, that it does have an impact on our town, sometimes in a negative way. Yet I realize the importance of the recreation and the forestry and so forth. So like I say, it's a bittersweet thing, but I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the Select Board because at some point, there could be a tipping point, you know, where it's costing the town a great deal of money because we don't get payment in lieu of taxes, which is called a pilot program. We do get some money back, but it nowhere near is the value that we would collect in taxes for that land. So I just wanted to bring that point out.
Quite well taken. I also do see that since we, there was a concern when we developed our town plan about the use of windmills and such along our ridge lines, that the preserving of these lands sort of limits the available lands for putting up a windmill farms and such on our ridge line. And that's sort of how I look at it. But I do appreciate your saying that there's only so much pie to be going around and if we're taking some taxable land off of our...
It's a bittersweet thing, but, and I, you know, it's hard to balance, to be honest with you. But I just want people to be aware that there is some give and take. There's, there is a downside to some of this stuff.
Well, I'd be glad to write a short letter on behalf of the Select Board. And I don't mind putting that comment into my letter that although it does reduce our taxable land mass, that we support the preservation of, of these lands and ridge lines in the area. So with permission, I will.
Sure, yeah.
Okay?
Mine in favor of that.
Okay, I guess I'll make a motion that I, I'll make a motion that I reach out to the Dear Run Nature Preserve and... Can I have a second? Second, Dr. Drew, any discussion? Hearing animals in favor of sending a letter of support to the Dear Run Nature Preserve, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, I'll do that. Point will take, Mr. Tanza.
Yeah, no, definitely.
Okay, all right. We wanted to discuss and vote on closing the Home Improvement Loan Fund. This is a suggestion that came from our treasurer and that this fund is, is, is in essence inactive with an occasional payment coming in, is that correct?
Right.
Very occasional, not...
Oh, yeah, it wasn't, just one person was making those payments and it was miniscule. I don't know, does the, does the church, the community, House Committee still have? Do we owe them money yet? Remember they borrowed some money or they, they were sending some money to them? There was something that we sent to them?
Twenty thousand, eight hundred dollars roughly.
I, I don't know, I'm just trying to remember. It was a while ago.
Something related to the Home Improvement?
Yes, that we, that we...
That was back, that was way back a while.
Okay, I'll just, but did they take all the money, is what I'm saying? Did they use all the monies that we allotted to them? There was $35,000 and I thought we allotted $17,000 to them.
This is several years ago.
Yes, okay, did they in fact?
I don't know, that's a question for Samara.
Okay, that's...
But I can tell you this much, from what I talked to her weeks, last week, and she gave me an update on the two funds, the church and the school.
Okay.
That the school, uh, the church has been stayed relatively static at a little over $20,000 in the budget, so that helps answer it.
Like I said, before you appropriate money, you have to know how much money you are appropriating or giving up or sending back into the, to the town coffers.
Right, and I mean, my note was from Samara from last time, because she did, this is, that's when she brought it up, was that there was approximately $900 in the fund?
Yes, it's been taken care of.
Oh, okay, then, yeah, then that's, okay.
Because it was thousands, it was 15,000?
Yeah.
It was, it was three years ago, anyway.
And we used some, I think, toward the, to reduce the budget to...
No, I'm talking about the money that was put directly towards the church. I'm trying to remember what...
Yeah, I don't, I don't...
I believe it was a part of the matching funds.
Thirteen thousand.
For doing...
That's what it was.
For rebuilding the church.
Well, if there's only $900 in there, that's, I think everyone's been paid.
Yeah, I, I think so.
I thought there was a little more than $900.
Just to be clear, was $900 in the, in the Home Improvement Loan Fund? Approximately, thank you.
So when they close it, where, where would you put that back?
Well, that's, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna go in and make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move that we close the Home Improvement Loan Fund and transfer whatever monies are in that fund to the general fund.
I second it. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to close the Home Improvement Loan Fund and transfer all the monies down there into the town's general fund. Any discussion?
Yeah, just a point. So the surplus that we have, $20,000, is basically at the end of, end of June of last year. So that has nothing to do with the two combined, and I can give you the point. So that, the $20,000 that we have for surplus...
Has nothing to do with this nine hours?
Is at the end of June, as nothing would come together as separate entities.
Correct.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion, a second on the floor. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of moving to close the, and close the Home Improvement Loan Fund and transfer any monies left in that fund to the town's general fund? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you very much. Okay, item 10, Old Business Sunny Lane Daycare update. Before, before we go to update with Bruce, I'm just curious, the lease was mailed out, Mr. Tanza?
Yes, it was. When?
Any, any?
This next morning, when you gave it to me Thursday.
I did it that night.
Told you, we weren't high enough.
Um, was the lease returned?
Nothing, I have heard nothing.
No, he's just saying that it was sent to her.
Right, I know.
Wasn't sent, wasn't returned yet.
I've seen her several... Email, email somebody, but we haven't heard nothing.
I've seen her several times since then, but I don't think she got it.
Yeah, I mailed it out, that, the meeting was Wednesday night, I mailed it out Thursday morning.
Thursday afternoon, yeah.
Thursday afternoon, right.
And it wasn't returned, so by mail.
All right, so we have the, the approved lease out and we're just waiting for it to be returned. And if we hear anything on social, either contact one or all of us.
Yeah, I think he gave it till February, didn't he?
During this, this, these two meetings.
These two meetings.
As a warning, last time, three years ago, she didn't wait till almost last minute to read the thing, remember that? So I don't know if that...
But she gave it till January 6th. And was saying that we need to have it.
And it was during the holiday season, so...
Right.
Right, because it is supposed to be executed during January.
Correct.
Right.
So it is signed by myself as the Select Warden and approved by us. All right, Bruce, you wanna share anything else on Sunny Lane Daycare?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm glad I got an hour.
I saved you an hour, I'm gonna hit you.
As per Doug's suggestion, I went downstairs when you were around and found this. And what this is, is the whole plan of the contracting of when the building was built. I wish I had known this a couple of months ago. Because it has all the information of everything that's in the building, how it was built, what zone valves, whatever, this and this and this, all in here. The building, just to give you a couple of quick things, was built in 1989, as is the boiler was put in at that point, and it's all in here.
Oh, that's good to know.
1989, okay.
$370,000 was paid, was paid for the addition and the renovation still, like you can see, the old building has changed a bit dramatically. See, there's no entranceway anymore. And if you notice, I was right about the windows on the backside, the free windows. They put them in the addition. And in here is actually remarks. Where did I hear remarks? Was it here? About, where did I hear that? About, it wasn't such a great idea about doing that entranceway that, that way?
Doing the V S, where the entrance...
Okay, I don't think you might have anything more about that. I've also done some more research. And I found out that, that not only the building is 30 years old now, but there's certain things that were misrepresented. We had a, we had an energy award back about three years ago that cost the town about, cost the budget about, not the town, but the budget about $1,100. And it was a reduced rate as a result of thinking about applying with the, with the county for that pellet stove initiative. And they went and did a blower test three years ago this, this week or this month. And when they did so, they, you know, you've seen the report. I read over the report a little bit last week and then there was a few discrepancies. And the one discrepancy then, one major discrepancy that I noticed, and it was as a result of Mark and I going up into the attic last weekend and looking around, which is what I've been wanting to do all sides, all summer. And they were talking about remediating the vermiculite insulation. There is an ounce of vermiculite insulation in the building, the sulfoglass.
Oh.
Well, I don't know about the walls, because I can't see them. I'm talking about the ceilings.
Right.
But that's what they were pertaining to. So that's inaccurate. I still have that original, that original report and I plan on calling Green Mountain, I figure their name is, Green Lantern, I think it is, to, to discuss the whole thing with them again when I get some time, if I reread it. There's some questions I have as to what they were talking about and what their recommendations were for the building. Really, that is way ahead of myself, because that's down the road as far as any energy efficiency on the building. It's definitely not short, short, short term. Okay, so last weekend, Dave, myself and Mark went in for about three hours into, into the building. And I'll cut to the chase about what Dave was, the three of us were doing, as we were trying to find what was the problem with that drain is. And I had a discussion with, with Scott Olbad about it and he says, you can see it, you can see it in the pipe, piping in the, in the basement area, going into the entranceway before you go out into the main gym area. And what happens is it actually lifted up. So something's pressing on it or something went down in the gym area. I put in, Vermont Sewer led me into that. And I put in a call to him to kind of ask him again exactly where he meant, where he thought the crown, crown was, because that's what's causing it. So we did some digging, the three of us, cut, cut away some of the material on the ceiling and got there, tried to look around. And I noticed one thing that the, the, one thing is, in, the two things that that building has that no other building would have because it's a school, is those huge ventilation pipes and of course, our famous water system. Well, the ventilation pipe, there was one big ventilation pipe that was actually resting right on the, on the septic. We don't know if that is the actual cause of the crown, because, crown of pipe. Because we didn't have, I didn't bring a level over, sorry. But we'll, we'll get to the bottom of it. And Mark had come up with a pretty good suggestion. And that is, and we're getting into details now, but basically cut away some of the joists in order to try and drop the drink, drop the pipe down, because that's what's causing the snag. As to how major of an issue, we've discussed all the details now, how to go forward in my talk, again, a little bit today with Scott Olbad about it, but more about the filters, which I'll get into in a, in a second. So we're working on that. And we haven't really decided on a, a course. We've got ideas on a course of action for it, but it's a pain in the...
Work is progress.
Discussion ensued.
So we're working on that. Now, the filters, we went, what happened, I told you? That was Scott Olbad, I'm trying to remember what I hadn't told the board.
You and Mark changed all the filters.
We changed all the filters. We started with basement, underneath my favorite crawl space, that's my new home, my new home.
Yeah.
And went upstairs and we changed all the crawl space, all the filters. And, and there's only one word you called, and that was disgusting. They were so bad that it was unbelievable. But we changed them, probably should go back with a wet dry vac and clean the grills off and stuff, but, but the filters changed.
When was the last time they would change? Do you have any idea?
Probably 1929.
Oh.
1989.
Oh, okay, all right, so it's something that...
I don't, I, I wouldn't hazard a guess. No, they've been changed, they haven't been changed once, and I'll tell you why. Because in the attic, above the preschool, in the heat exchanger, has, they use the same size, one-inch filters that they use in the ductwork and the ventilation system behind the furnace in the basement, or boilers in the basement. When Mark and I got, the first thing we noticed, Mark and I got in the, in that section there, was this big metal grill, big, with a grill, all metal mesh, and a separate one-inch filter, plastic, like a big giant scruffy. That was, that was meant to go in front of it, sitting on the floor.
Never installed?
No, had been taken out.
Oh, yeah.
Too lazy to clean. The, that wasn't fair, whatever. The, the grill portion, not the, not the scruffy portion, was so dense, I hazard a guess I probably couldn't even clean it out with a, with a, with a garden unless I'd have to use a pressure washer. It was that kicked. So obviously, I think, somebody went up there and saw that and said, oh, I'm gonna deal with this, I got that other filter in. Put that in, and according to Scott, that's not a bad fix. But my reason for calling Scott was, is if I can put that back in again, it's a lot to work. And of course, you can. So I'm trying to tighten up the filter situation a little bit because of that reason and because the size that they're using in the one in the boiler room isn't exact. I think we're using a 13 by 16 and a 15, I think calls for a 15 by 18.
Oh.
I called FW Web. It's not major, but, you know, I'm just...
No, there should be...
I'm just ridiculous about the details.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just ridic, and FW Web couldn't help me for a size.
I'm sorry.
And I haven't gone on the net to see what I could find.
Well, you're talking about filters, because down in that room that we clean out, there were two boxes of filters, two different sizes.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
The big ones is the ones I'm pertaining to. The smaller ones, and I bought an additional box, as you saw on the debit last time, the payors, of 12-inch square ones. Those are the ones for the air filters that are in the rooms.
Okay.
So once this all gets straightened out, we should be in pretty good order. But I never, ever, ever dreamed I'd get into Steve in this building, but it's not over yet.
I have some good news for you.
I love good news. You got money for me?
No, well, in a way, yes, because I, the, the water testing frequency is reduced now. We don't have to have it, I, I thought I brought the email with me. I might have shared it with Guy or someone, but, I'm not sure. But we don't have to do the monthly, monthly, I think it's, it's been reduced, so...
That's great.
I can't, we don't have the...
We got a, we got a letter a few months ago in regards to saying that, yes, we were, we were, we didn't have to do that every month, it was every quarter and so forth. It's in the files of the Sunny Lane Daycare. But there's also a letter there, that green card in the mail is a, yes. And I just...
Drinking water, a database search, okay.
So basically, it's, from my understanding, we only have to do that... So basically, it's, from my understanding, we only have to do that every three months.
Right, because we haven't had any problems with the water, so they, they changed the system, so let's say it's a, or something like that.
Great, two things. I remembered what I had, the information that I hadn't given to the board, but I told these two guys who were with me last week in the meeting that I had with Scott Bolvat, and that was the discussion as to how we're gonna maintain the water system. And you all are pretty to that. And what Scott would like to see happen, and I told him it was a good idea, the water system's his baby. This was his choosing. He doesn't want anybody really fooling with it, to let him control the times to which change the lamps, and when to. The only thing that we would, we would even consider doing, what led to this, was the cleaning of the water filter, which is in the boiler room, straight ahead of this thing.
It drops down, right.
Yeah, very easy to do. We all got, Mark and I talked about this a great length, and it's really easy. I have a light at home.
There's been no alarms going off? Oh, good.
And that's been six weeks now.
Yeah, right.
So what Scott's thoughts were, is he cleaned everything out, checked the bulbs, got everything up to snuff, check the water filter, got everything up, up top them, and he wants to come back in, probably in March, to check, to rip it apart, to see how it looks. I said, well, I'm in favor of that, start on maybe a quarterly, a quarterly maintenance schedule, to be determined, to see how often we really need to do it. But we really don't know that yet, because we don't, we don't have any baseline at this point, and that's what we're developing.
Okay, well, that's good.
Can I describe that as a regular maintenance contract?
Not a contract, a regular maintenance schedule.
Oh, lastly, you gave me a, 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 a RIA for, for the maintenance for Mark?
Yes.
For the job, for the.
Job description.
Job description. I'm gonna redo it, we'll talk about it. It's, it's just, it's a lot of work. Well, I think it just needs to be changed dramatically, because there's things that are just not applicable, and things that should be put in.
Okay, work on it. Write it up, cross out, bring it to.
Who's the starting point?
If you want, if you want us to put it on the agenda for next week, which our next meeting might be a little busy, but.
I can do it, I can, I can make my suggestion by the sixteenth. It's not that easy.
The only thing I'd say, yeah, I mean, if it's, if it's not something that urgently needs to be done at the meeting in the sixteenth, I would suggest we not do it.
Yeah, I would do it February.
That's gonna be very.
So Mark and I, it's pretty much, we're in sync at this point as to work on.
Because that's gonna be a busy week, we've got two speakers here.
We're okay. We're watching the building and trying to keep the filters clean, and it would be just beautiful if we got to April first, and she didn't have any incident through now and then.
It's the, it's the.
The Sunny Lane daycare.
Property manager.
Custodian?
Not custodian.
I think we called it property manager, possibly.
Was it custodian?
There is a, we formed a job description and gave it a title. At the moment, I can't remember what it is. We have it.
I don't have it. But it's a.
The property manager job description will be fine.
If I, if something ever happens to me, and there's ever an issue in that building, as far as like, remember we just had the issue with the sulfuric acid in that building? It's all right in here, what they did, everything.
That's good.
Really thorough.
When we were going through that, I was, I saw that, and I'm like, we gotta save this, so.
It's like, what, seventy-five pages?
I know, it's very dirty, I hope you wash your hands and we can use it.
Yeah, because they were like, neged mice down there.
So wash your hands. Okay, what else, Bruce? Anything else, Bruce?
No, I think I'm good.
All right.
Those ones, I'll let you know.
All right, now we're gonna get down to recycling. I'm gonna combine a little bit of recycling with email, because I did get an email about recycling. And since I got it from Mr. Doug Blom, he said, I know that the recycling bins have been an issue ever since they were installed, but I think the time has come to let them go, people have other recycling options available to them, and I believe that individuals should take their responsibilities among themselves and not rely on the taxpayers to subsidize their waste. They are an ISO, cost the town money, and I am sure some of the loose trash makes its way into Grassy Brook. I responded and said that the two thousand and eighteen twenty line item for recycling will come before the town in March due to the increase in the cost. We did agree upon that, didn't we? Did not.
No, we didn't.
We did not agree.
So I, after I wrote this, I wanted, that's why I'm reading it.
I think we just increased the line item.
Okay. Oh, so, he sent a picture, I wasn't here, but you obviously.
I got the picture too.
Of the mess?
Oh, you got the picture?
Yeah, he took a.
I took pictures on Monday morning with the trash stacked up all around the outside. Yeah, it's terrible. And that's only, I have to be honest, that's only happened now in the last, once in the last five or six months. Because we've been, we've been, we've been monitoring that very well, and it hasn't been an issue. But this week was an issue, and tonight it's an issue again. There's four tires out there, there's boxes. Yes, yes, it is.
The thing he doesn't understand, you take those dumpsters away, it's just gonna be, it's just gonna be piled.
It's not necessarily true, they're not gonna do fame when they took the dumpsters away. But they're right on Main Street.
It'll take an adjustment time.
Right, I mean, that's right in their driveway, and their cops go by every day.
Which has staffing five days a week, so I think it's a different situation.
We're really crafting this.
I would suggest, for our discussion, because I know we don't wanna get.
No, we don't.
Have it take.
I'm gonna rewrite my.
We wanna have a, I would, I would suggest that we try to limit ourselves to fifteen or twenty minutes at most discussing this. But I would suggest, I made some notes about it, and I think there are three different issues that we need to remember are all associated to this, but they're different issues. Trash dumping is one issue. Non, I'm gonna call it non-Brookline residential use of our recycling bin is another issue. And the rising costs of getting rid of our recycling is a third issue.
Get rid of, I mean disposing of recycling?
Disposing of, yeah, processing.
Of recycling?
Of recycled materials, yeah. I mean, the trash dumping, you know, to Doug's point, it is, it is unsightly. I'm sure, to Gwen's point, that I follow how not having the bins there will eliminate people dumping trash. I think they'll just dump trash elsewhere, like we see all over Ellenware Road, all over Putney Mountain, all over, you know, I mean, it's. So I don't, if, if his, if his point is that it's not cost effective for the taxpayers, and that he, and that he doesn't feel that the taxpayers should be funding it, and it should be left to individuals to deal with, I can understand that point.
I think that's what he's sort of saying.
Yep, there's your eighteen grand for your down payment.
But I guess, it's, I think it's important to note that we already have a trash dumping problem in our town. And I am going to speculate that if we get rid of those. It is going to be considerably worse, because I would assume, when you go and you dig, and you go over the sides of Ellenware, and you pick up the trash that's discarded there, I will say it is generally speaking, not recyclable material. So I leave room for the possibility that the people who are dumping trash various places in town might actually be taking their recycling to the bin. If they don't have that place to take it, I think it stands to reason, those same people might then start dumping their recycling somewhere. Because I don't think the people who are dumping trash are paying someone privately to deal with it, which people will have to do if we have no bins for the recycling.
I think we all kind of agree.
And it is not legal, thanks to the state of Vermont, for you to dispose of cans and bottles, and corrugated paper. And every year, that's going to become more strict. So you, you either are going to have to pay a hauler to get rid of it, or you're gonna have to throw it in the river.
And soon we have to compost.
Forget it.
Well, yeah, that's prob, that's pretty unlikely to ever be super big deal where we live, but, yeah. So. I mean, I, I will say that if it weren't for the fear of the trash dumping, and what not having those bins is potentially going to do to what gets dumped, even though it will personally, I know from my, my situation, where I live and my trash hauler, I know it will cost me considerably more to deal with my recycling through a private hauler than it does, even if we continue to raise the budget item for the recycling. But I would be willing to do that. But what I, what I can't quite get my head around is what's gonna happen to all, to the, to the one and a half tons of material that was, that went into that box over a twenty-four hour period.
It will find someplace, it will find a hole somewhere.
Some of it will be disposed of through private haulers, I mean, I'm sure that's true. I'm sure a lot of people will start paying their private hauler, or they will take it to Rallower like you guys do, and, and other people do. But some amount of it is gonna get dumped places in our town. But we don't, I guess, there's no way to know how much that will be, but.
I agree with you.
We may find out.
Especially if we first stop it. That first initial hit is gonna make a mess in this town.
Okay, but there's an adjustment period like every other town. We're the only town that has recycling.
Well, you and I talked about this a great length, and I agree with everything that you're saying. And what I really don't like is paying eighteen grand a year for that dumpster, and it's going up. So we're back to.
Yeah, we're gonna be lucky if it's only eighteen.
At the rate we're going.
At the rate it's going now, it's gonna be, it's gonna be.
Because I think more and more people are abusing it.
I think the town, Doug, Doug Omen has shown that the town is starting to see that this is a problem, and it has to be brought to the table. Do they want to continue to pay this accelerated cost? And that's where this is the. Or, or do they want to just stop it? Or do you wanna do some of the ideas that we were talking about previous meetings?
Isn't that a discussion that's gonna come up in March anyway?
Well, not, no, it's a part of our line, it's a part of our line item. I, I have to retract my email to Doug, because for some reason, I was thinking that we had talked about putting it as an article.
Well, I think, I think we, I think we discussed the possibility of having an article that is essentially discussing what to do about recycling, in a.
And we can still do that.
But as far as how much we were going to budget.
Yeah, the appropriation wasn't in.
The appropriation for recycling currently, we were not planning on that being a separate article. But I'll say, like, like we talked about, I mean, we've currently budgeted eighteen thousand dollars for it, and I know that there was a lot of concern already, because that's, for our budget, that's a big increase, and the hit to the increase in the tax rate is basically because of that. The rest of the budget is basically, is level funded. What I'll say is, that's, we might find as we get closer to it, that it is more, that it needs to be more like thirty thousand dollars.
The bottom line is that you can still create an article for the town.
Yes, right.
So you're not done yet.
No, and I, I'm under the opinion that the town should know what's going on. I mean, we're starting to see some interest in that respect, because it's starting to look like hell. But they, they need to know how much it's increased, and how much it's costing them. And what, and let them discuss with us what the choices are, and it's up to town, up to the town to make a decision. We can't really put the end of the club over that, say this way it's gonna be.
No, the select board does make the decision. So the budget, you're gonna put so much in, and we're gonna have recycling. That is something that.
That's true, but we've just raised the budget on that item.
Six thousand dollars.
Fifty, fifty percent. I think we have, I think we have the responsibility to tell the town, we've got a problem here, what do you think? I think they are our advisors, that we can do what they, that's good for everybody's concern. If everybody says, forget it, yank the thing out, we gotta tell them what's, what is, what is probably gonna happen. Do you still wanna do that? Do you want us to put up a fence? I think the discussion should come up at that meeting, I really do.
Well, I think it needs to be put in an article regarding recycling, not the budget, but do you still want?
Like we originally did with the eleven thousand dollars three years ago.
I haven't to, not to ignore, not ignore is the wrong word, to just set the budget and say, well, here we go. It's kind of a, it's kind of a bad road you go down.
Well, that would probably be discussed in March anyway, when people see that it went.
Well, no, you have to, you have to craft the article.
That's not in there. Is it in?
You can make an article before, you haven't approved the budget.
I mean, the numbers, it doesn't show.
Doesn't show.
Doesn't show. They would know, unless you tell them.
Right.
Well, no, because in the, in the book, you put the budget, you put the line item.
Yeah, eighteen thousand dollars.
Recycling went from eleven thousand to eighteen thousand, that would definitely be discussed in March.
Well, went to twelve thousand.
But I think it still should be put as an article to be discussed.
Shall the town approve the eighteen thousand dollar line item budget for?
We've been banging, independently, we've been banging, banging this around for a while now.
That's a lot of money.
And this, this is a lot of money, and people gotta know what's going on, I think.
Is that just for the trucking, or is it?
That's for everything.
It's the trucking and the disposal.
We own the bin, right?
No.
No, we don't, we don't pay a rental, but it's.
Free loan as a loaner.
Right, the Solid Waste Management District has loaned us the bin, so we're not charging, we don't pay a monthly fee for possessing the bin.
So we're just paying by volume to, and the trucking too?
And the trucking, exactly. So getting to that point, so setting aside the illegal dumping, and the issues that surround dumping, because some amount of the challenge with that bin and that site is dumping. Probably, I think we all are going to assume, the, what the larger part of the problem is non-residential use of the bin. Use of the bin by non-Brookline residents, and quite likely, use of the bin by commercial entities.
Two things, you can stop the former, the first one, but the second one, we might be able to, if we know who's doing it. We can't stop the people from Athens from dropping their stuff away, they're just gonna freaking do it.
Well, that's, but, but my, my point was going to be, as Bob Spencer noted when he came to talk to us a few weeks ago, for the lap, for the year, basically, our volume of, at the, at bin went up by more than, it more than doubled. That can't be purely because we're now taking plastics that we were doing before. It's got to be because of people using it from outside of town. All I'm saying is, practically speaking, and you and I have talked about this, the only way we're ever going to control that, if we choose to control that, and that's, you know, one of the options is, we just decide, as a town, we're gonna continue to pay more, and we're gonna accept the fact that our volumes are partly because non-residents are using it, but, oh, well, that's just the way life is, and we accept that. Another option is, we consider trying to do something about that. Unfortunately, I would argue, where that bin is located, there is very little we can do without significant investment in that space. So I think, why, and maybe this is one of the things that we would somehow craft into a discussion. Well, it isn't just fencing, though, because the thing is, is that if we don't have some degree of monitoring of the site, fencing, it's, it's sitting across from a virtually abandoned property already, people are just gonna throw stuff over the fence. People are just gonna throw stuff over the fence.
Or lean it.
Or lean it against the fence. We're gonna, maybe it isn't gonna be in the bin, but it's all gonna be outside.
Well, Townsend has the same issue. They have gates up, they close the, the transfer station, they come by in the morning and it's all loaded out in front of them. So it's a tough, it's a tough call. I, I don't know.
When you were on the argument, you wanted to present about cameras. And you were under the, this is what we discussed last time, you were on the argument to, to dispute the biggest.
Well, I guess the thing I'd say, where is that, where that is located now, there is no practical way to monitor it with cameras. For starters, we have no poles. There's no power poles on the opposite side of the road anywhere near it. There's one very small pole there now. We would have to put up poles. The further problem we have is we have no internet access at that location. So what we would have to do is we would have to put game cameras up.
That have to be changed, that someone has to go to and download the footage from the game camera.
Go through that footage to try to identify people that they think maybe used it, who shouldn't have used it. And then, as we've discussed before on a lot of other circumstances, then what do we do?
We have no policy.
Well, we have, we have, we have.
But we don't have an ordinance.
We have virtually no enforcement.
Exactly.
I mean, because.
Just state laws, I mean, littering and trash and things of that.
Right, I know, that's fine.
But there's no one here to follow what I'm.
But, but are we, do we really think practically speaking, we're going to see a car that was on the, I mean. Okay, so let's say it's dumping. That maybe we can identify someone who dumped illegally. And we can pursue through the state police, the license plates of that car in order to identify who they are. And then we can do a, we can issue them a citation. That's, that's fine. But if our big problem as far as the costs are concerned is non-resident use, how are we going to figure that out? If I have footage.
To be honest with you, if they knew they had cameras, they had all those things, they were right next to the town yard. They could not control it. So what they did is they just eliminated it.
So that's really coming to what?
That's what, that's what they did, sir, now. At thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah, that gets ridiculous. I agree, that gets ridiculous. And what you and I were talking about, which we were pretty much on board together, is if it meant just that they were gonna drop some, not to put any pressure on you, because you're the one who cleans it up. But if our only concern, other than the cost, is stuff being left in front of a fence or in front of the, or in front of the dumpsters of those, no offense. That's minimal considering, we and I talked about this, what it would do if they weren't there and how we're trash rusting that. Now, we can't, we can't ignore that. It's gonna happen.
No, I.
It's gonna happen. You're the one, you're the one that had a green up, you know, you know better than I do.
Not for my.
And it's gonna be worse, right David?
Yeah, oh, it's gonna be awful. I mean, I'm, I'm assuming that it will, it would be very bad. But I mean, to God's point, and I, I mean, I completely agree. Unfortunately, and in a way, we haven't discussed recycling and the situation with recycling at town meeting since we had the original article to fund it. And what I'll say is, at the time when we did that, none of us had any way of knowing that all of our surrounding towns would abandon it.
The only thing we knew.
So therefore.
The only thing we knew was Newfane. David, the only time we knew that was changing.
No, we, no, we didn't. Newfane, that very same, I'm happy to show you the town report. Newfane warned an article for their town residents. I wanna make sure this is on tape. So that I can. They, they, they warned a town article the same way we did, except they didn't attach any money to it. And they basically warned an article that said, do you want the town to continue to offer recycling services? And it was unanimously agreed to by the town, by the voters.
You give it a bit.
And they then proceeded to decide not to do it because they didn't like how much it was gonna cost.
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, wait a minute.
So the town voted unanimously in Newfane.
Newfane did, yes.
So they wanted it, but the select board decided that due to the cost, that they were not going to provide that service. Cause we don't really provide many services in town. We provide the service of road care and recycling.
We got the answer to that, is that what happened? Then New, that the select board in Newfane said, even though you guys voted.
I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I don't think it's for me to characterize how, why the Newfane select board made the decision they made.
No, but it's in there.
But I will say that what I do know is that they, their townspeople voted on an article that was phrased, do you want the town, something to the effect of, do you want the town of Newfane to continue to offer recycling services for residents? And it was unanimously approved.
Yes.
Yes. But then I think during the investigation phase of how they were going to do it, because they never considered, perhaps because of some of the problems they'd had before, of course, they no longer own that land. Um, maybe they knew they were eventually no longer gonna own that land where the bins were. They investigated a whole bunch of other options and ultimately decided not to do any of them, basically.
They, they, I can see them not following the voted article because their fiduciary responsibilities would be.
Interesting.
You know, it was really gonna be exorbitant.
And they, they need for it, to be honest with you, after three years.
There was a lot of town, I think there were a lot of people in, in Newfane who were disappointed that there was no longer the ability to recycle in the town. I think there are people who are still probably feel that way.
I think really after three years, the town has a good track record. They know what's going on and we see what's happening. And I think it might be advantageous to bring it up as an article again, to see if the town, we should do that. The unfortunate thing is that at town meeting, only sixty people show up and we have four hundred and thirty voters. So it's, but that's, that's their way it goes, yeah.
They know a year in advance when the meeting's gonna be, give me a break. Now, we, we talked about that a whole time.
What do you recycle?
And, and talk about change, get to Monday night, we're not gonna do that right now. But they have the opportunity.
There may be some issues, but again, now watch this.
Peter out, I've been, I've been at town meetings, remember when the vote for the, for the bridge, the covered bridge? When they were fixing the covered bridge? And Patty and I were at that vote, I forgot how we voted. But the thing was approved by two votes. So when you say that only forty people or sixty people show up, it actually gives forty people or sixty people more power. So if you're, if you're dumb enough not to go and vote, you get what you asked for.
Absolutely, I know.
Absolutely, and a year, then are we estimating cost?
All right, I'll, I'll tell you this, that we started off at eleven thousand. Uh, this year for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, we voted the budget up to twelve thousand. And then this current budget that we're going to vote on in March is eighteen thousand. However, I don't know where that thirty thousand came from, but.
David seems to think that we're in that direction.
I, no, well, I'm saying, I mean, it, there's absolutely no way to predict because six months from now, what the price of processing any of this will be.
We don't have any control.
There's absolutely no way to know what that number would be. It's also extremely difficult to know whether we can, but what I will say is that if we, I know that if we are in the situation where we have to pick up, where we have to get that bin picked up every three days or every four days, like has been the case.
Yeah, the last two or three weeks, yep.
Um, eighteen thousand dollars is not nearly going to be enough money. It's going to probably be more.
I think for everybody else in the county to talk themselves.
Let me ask you this, you had a number that, that was the estimate of per cost per capita here in Brookline for doing the recycling. It was thirty dollars a person?
It all depends on, I mean, currently, the increase that we had proposed in the budget of going to eighteen thousand ends up.
Divide eighteen thousand by three hundred and thirty-six parcels of land. That'll give you an idea.
Well, yeah, although it's not.
Well.
We have four parcels, forty-six parcels.
It isn't, yeah, that's not, that's not how it works with the taxes. But yeah, as a, as a rough kind of ballpark it would be. Cause it's dependent on the assessed value of the property that's, that is applied at the rate.
Well, we have seventy million, we have seventy million dollars worth of assessed property. Seventy-three minus the exemptions.
It does not, um.
Yeah, if you had a more expensive property, then you're paying more.
Yep.
On page seventeen, uh, under.
And I think I shouted it down and I think it was actually in the previous year's book. For some reason that I wrote it down because I didn't have my two thousand and seventeen book handy.
But I thought your figure was like forty dollars per.
Yeah, I just, I don't wanna, so it's, the eighteen thousand dollars basically represents a sixty-three percent increase over what it was at eleven, when we originally voted the article.
That's correct.
And at the tax rate that ends up, we're, what we're looking at now, you know, if, let's just say that an asset, the assessed value of the property was three hundred thousand dollars. Which I am pretty sure is far above probably the median property valuation for this town. But let's just say that. So obviously the higher the valuation of the property, the higher the burden would be. It would work out to be essentially seventy-five dollars a year.
Per.
Per household.
Household.
Per parcel. Per parcel.
And if you think about it, that's really not, not really bad when most people are paying forty, fifty a month.
But I think what annoys people is that we're subsidizing other towns. And that's what's getting people a little angry.
Right, and the thing is, is it, there are, I mean, I don't, you know, depending on, you know, depending on where people live in town currently and what their situation is as far as their arrangement with their private hauler, or if like yourselves, I mean, that's the thing, you know, like you guys, I know Dot and Bruce both.
I take my garbage down to Browlboro.
Right, so you can, you can take your recycling at the same time and it won't cost you anything more.
That's correct, I've been there a few times.
So for some people, it is genuinely, it could be genuinely cheaper for them to just deal with it themselves. So I don't wanna overstate.
Except the elderly.
The benefits of having the bin here from a cost standpoint. Because for some residents, it's more cost effective, for some, it might not be. But to the point Bruce, he brings up, and I bring up as well, I don't know what's gonna happen to all of that stuff for the people who do not currently pay for someone to haul their trash.
So I guess basically what we, we have to do is put it on as a article to be voted on and to be discussed.
The town's gotta discuss it. And you know, it's another thing here, and we really haven't looked at, is it's the town's responsibility or their interest as to whether or not they wanna spend twelve to eighteen thousand or thirty thousand dollars on this, or put the money towards something else.
Like, like a garbage litter patrol.
You know, I mean, I mean, you wanna.
Well, I, you know, you see the cans and bottles alongside road now.
That is what I meant. Do they, would they, instead of spending twelve to eighteen thousand or thirty thousand dollars on that, do they wanna put it towards another, that total eighteen thousand dollars for another item in the budget that they're paying for, like Newbrook or whatever, rather than paying for that. So it's really their choice as to whether they want that and that, that comes to what you're saying.
Well, point gotta be brought up, you know, what's gonna happen with.
Or reduce the tax burden.
Because.
Yeah?
Because resident, responsible residents, we are going to shift the cost of dealing with the recycling back to the individuals if we do that.
Right.
So, I mean, I would argue pretty strongly that it would not be wise for us to propose that we would take that eighteen thousand dollars and spend it elsewhere. I mean, I think it, it might be.
The town of Townsend, they purchased their own garbage truck or recycle truck? And how would, how do you think that would work out if Brookline owned a truck to haul their own recycle?
Nobody's there to, to, to monitor it.
They know whenever it's full, I mean.
Yeah, the problem would be that like.
Purchase a vehicle, so for starters.
I mean, yeah, I mean, to purchase a vehicle that could swap out containers like that and haul them would be.
A lot of money.
Pretty expensive.
An enormous amount of money.
I've seen them in the twenty, twenty-five thousand dollar range for those trucks. They're ex municipal.
But you have to get operators, you have to pay salaries, workman's comp, insurance.
Yeah.
So if it was only being used a couple of times a week, you know.
Yeah. I guess what I'd argue is that I don't think that the cost of us, generally speaking, the cost we're paying triple T to haul the boxes is not really the problem.
No.
The problem is the frequency at which we're having to have the boxes hauled. And also the cost now that we have to pay to dispose of this material. Because unfortunately, in the last several years, the markets have turned so that we now have to pay quite a bit of money to get rid of this material. Whereas you, you used to be able to make money off of it, now it, so all of the factors are working against us. As well as our volumes have increased greatly because none of the other towns are doing it. It's, it's sort of a perfect storm of lots of different things that have gone wrong to, as far as the cost of this whole thing.
But the town has to understand that we have no control of the cost if we keep it.
Peter, you wanted to share something?
Yeah, I mean, Whiteingham has an extensive system. I mean, they do, they have a, they have a part-time employee when it's open and a big gate when it's not.
Yeah.
And they, and they're doing the whole, they've got a compactor and all this stuff.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah, it's a full transfer station.
Yeah, it is, and but the thing is, I think it's a question of scale. If you were gonna locate a business somewhere, you would assess the volume of business that you could possibly do against the cost of doing that business. Now, I don't think the numbers match up at the size you guys are.
For a town, we're finding that out really.
Yeah, it is.
It just doesn't scale to this smaller size.
Right.
Unless you did a deal in which three or four towns were participating.
Together, right.
As they are now, but they're not paying for it, so.
Exactly.
No, we're paying for it.
Yeah.
So I think you have a scale problem and it's just not viable, but that's just my opinion.
No, you're very, very much on target.
I think that's a, I think that's a very good point. I mean, just so you know, I mean, like, just to, Whiteingham and Townsend and a number of other towns have full transfer stations that take both trash and recycling and also compost and many other forms of recycling that they're legal, legally obligated to take if they do that, which is.
Don't they also have to sell trash bags and so forth?
They don't necessarily have to, so that how they fund doing the trash is, there are different ways they can do it, but.
Works bro has stickers, you just.
Yeah, why are you having stickers too?
Each bag's gonna have it.
And then there are people who have curb, you know, I mean, Westminster has curbside pickup.
We've got punch pickers.
Despite not being a particularly big town. Anyway, I, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement that we need to have some kind of discussion about it at town meeting to try to see what people think. I'm not, I'm just personally not sure how we're going to word an article for any kind of vote of any kind.
Yeah, and how are you gonna get the town to agree?
There's too many directions we potentially could go.
Yeah, the article has to be real short and concise, just like shall the town, yes or kind of thing. It's not if and or shall, you know.
Well, the options are easy, shall the town continue recycling at a fee of this year for eighteen thousand dollars? Or should the town put the onus on the property owners to recycle their own recyclables? Real simple, I mean, and then you can open it for discussion and that's what we did with the eleven thousand thing.
That's true.
Almost the same, same language.
It's hard to, it's hard.
The other thing is.
It's hard to color this.
If, is that once the budget is exhausted, if it's not enough that we're budgeting for, then we stop this process of recycling. What do we do if we, if it really is too, too small of a budget? So you need twenty-three thousand dollars and not eighteen thousand dollars. What do we do? Do we stop for May, June, July, no more recycling because we're out of budget?
Well, technically you could.
Technically we could.
Could because of the budget.
Yep.
Right.
But if you give, put it to like what Chris says, if you put it to the town and like Guy's saying, put it to town, they're making a choice. They, if we explain to them, from eleven to twelve to eighteen, it could go up to thirty.
If we haven't.
It could go up to thirty. It could go up to thirty. They need to know specifically, this select board cannot control the cost of that dumpster. They, we need to get the onus off our butts too. It's, it's not our responsibility, or it's not our problem that we haven't, wait, I'm not worried.
It is our problem.
It is a problem, but it's not our fault. And they need to understand that we can't control it. And so they need to decide what they'd like us to do. And I think the whole idea of the article, like Gwen and Guy are saying, is is really what we need to do. If we're talking a thousand dollars or five hundred dollars, I mean, okay, you know, like, what's the idea? We're talking up to, he said sixty-five percent, we're talking up to double to double and a half.
Well, that's what we've already budgeted.
What you're leaving out of the equation is that we used to pay the Wyndham Solid Waste Regional Commission, whatever it was, six or seven thousand dollars a year anyway.
That's true. That's true.
Well, the only other thing is.
So that's been reduced by what, David? Are you, you know better than I do?
It's now like thirty-five hundred or something.
Okay.
When, when, when?
But I mean, to, to Peter's point, the reason it was only six or seven thousand, it was more than that, but eight or nine thousand that we paid as part of the Solid Waste Management District is that we were part of a group of nineteen towns that were all pooling resources and materials. And was probably not charging enough for, but, sorry.
That's okay, never go with it.
I think it's still down there.
Well, yeah, I think what I was gonna say when they were discussing stopping it, you gotta remember those bins are given, loaned to us now. If we completely stop, they're gonna take the bins. That means it's done. We wouldn't be able to start it back up, because they probably wouldn't give them back to us.
Uh, who knows? Yeah, who knows?
You gonna name?
I don't know.
Well, David has.
I think that.
You understand what I'm saying.
Yeah, right. I mean, I think there's the possibility that we could figure out a way to have them held for a certain amount of time while we.
Work on this. Well, if it was just something I thought needed.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a, it's, it's, it's a very good point, though. I mean, I guess I would argue that if we, if we got to the point of stopping the recycling and taking the bins away, I think that's the decision. And then, I can't really see a, a way that it would be feasible for us to restart it in the future, or that it would make sense to restart it in the future.
I would say at that point that we would need to budget a amount of money to have regular litter patrol in town.
Yeah, we have.
If we could find somebody who needs to do it for you.
It's cheaper than thirty thousand dollars. This, town's gotta make a choice.
Let's bring us back together here.
Get those school kids to come through.
Yes, sure. So, now my email response to Mr. Wellman wasn't too far off. If, so what's the pleasure of the board? What, what am I hearing? Am I hearing that we're going to add another article? We have an article about the wheeled excavator, we have an article about the surplus. Are we having an article about recycling?
We're trying to stick up the amount of time that we've gained from the school issue.
I mean, I.
I think we should, might be right there.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm not opposed to there being an article about it, I'm just not, like I say, I'm not.
How do we word it?
I, yeah, I think we probably, unfortunately, we're, we're gonna have to have more of a discussion of how do we word it? Because what is the choice, what exactly is the choice that we're giving people? Because unfortunately, it is a very complicated series of things. It's not
Yeah, the ramifications are.
Well, down to one. But I think, I think to your guys' point, maybe effectively, the article is should the, you know, whatever, shall the town continue to offer recycling services despite the ever-increasing costs?
But they need to know.
Something like that, I don't know. I mean, we can discuss then, in discussion, we can lay out more detail. But ultimately, if we're making it an article, unless we're going to, yeah, I mean, if we're making it an article that people are going to vote on, it needs to be something that is
Clear.
Clear. And at the moment, I can't think of what that would.
I'm gonna go, I'm gonna get a webinar next week on the eighth about articles. I will, I will ask.
Maybe this could be a good test case for sort of, yeah.
Can I take the book from when we had the article?
We'll make our first.
But it's more complicated than that. So I will see what.
Well, I, I think, you know, just like, like you've said, the, the select board has to make a decision in regards to what they wanna do, because you're spending the town's money, and you're responsible for spending the town's money. And that's, you have to, when it gets to a point where it's getting a little ridiculous, you have to present that to the body and say, what do you want us to do?
Arthur, I'm gonna ask, as a resident, what do you think of all of this?
Now you've. Of the recycling?
Yes.
Oh, I, I'm so glad there's recycling. But I passed by during the day, and I saw someone with a small pickup and Massachusetts license disposing of stuff.
Yeah, this really gets under our crawl.
And I, I don't know if I mentioned something to them, but I mentioned it to someone else, and they said, people doing contracting, coming from other towns, might dump here if they were doing contracting here. That kind of thing. So, how do you monitor it? I would, I would put up a video.
That's really, we don't have power, we don't have internet, there's nothing there that we can hook into. It's not like there's any source. But, you know, that, that's our problem.
But then unfortunately, it's also then paying someone to review that video and monitor it, which is not something we currently have or.
And then legal fees and everything else.
Maybe there's, maybe we have to get a fancy box that you put in a coin, or you put in a dollar to dispose of.
Well, the problem is you're just leaving things out on the ground. They're not gonna put it. It's not like Aldi's where they put the quarter to get the cart, they're not gonna do that.
That's only when it's full.
Not necessarily.
Some people don't even.
They put garbage there, not recycling.
Tires.
Tires, televisions.
TVs.
We said, fortunately, there's a bunch.
Televisions.
Overlapping problems.
I pass it almost every day.
Well, that's because Guy cleans it up.
It gets the daily, gets cleaned up every day.
I'm dumpster Dan.
Dump, dump the guy.
Well, we're.
I'm gonna suggest we move on from now, but.
But if next week we're doing articles.
Yeah.
I mean, I can come up with a short, I'll come up with a short suggestion based upon my.
You know, it doesn't have to be a, a, a voting article, it just has to be a recommendation, just like you did in Nook. Recommendation from the town that they think the select board should do, because the select board cannot control the cost of the situation. They need to know that.
Right.
And if they don't know it, and we start putting our label on, well, we, we did eighteen thousand dollars, but I'm sorry, it went to thirty. They need to know that that's what happened.
Right. All right, Yushal, thank you very much for your input. David, very, very informative information, the information and Guy, everyone who shared, it's a complicated situation. All right, we'll move on into communications. The email that I had, I've already shared with you, that was from Mr. Wellman regarding his opinion and seeing the degree of the area. Then we can move on to regular mail. And while I'm looking at regular mail, I'm gonna pass around the warrants for you all to take a look at. Okay, so one of the items from regular mail is from the drinking water and groundwater protection.
I added our codes in here for, in case you wanted to.
So.
Doesn't need to be signed, I already signed it the other day.
But Guy, I'm not sure, we're not mailing this in. Have you typed this into the?
I, no, no, I didn't. I just put the information in the slots. And I don't know if this is after you spoke with the people in Montpelier regards to testing.
Well, I printed out the link, they had us on a different schedule. Then I got a follow-up email saying those things. So I'll check on this again.
Okay, what's the date that I received that?
You received this on the eighth, nineteenth of December.
Which was the last meeting we had.
It wasn't, yeah, okay, so we had, okay. We got a letter from the state of Vermont that says our equalized study results for our grand list of seventy million, eight hundred sixty-two thousand.
That's our CLA.
Yeah, CLA is one hundred point three three.
Which is great.
Which is.
Wow, that went up.
Which is great. We were at ninety-five point eight.
Wow.
A hundred is the magic number. Almost no one ever gets to a hundred.
Oh my.
But one point, well, only three-three one-hundredths of a, of a percentage over, so what it reflects is that the listeners are doing a good job, and our property is fairly valuated. What it also means is that last year, we had a little bump in property taxes due to the, our assessed value being ninety-five point eight. So the state felt that we weren't paying our fair share of taxes, so they brought us up to a hundred percent. This year, we're just a tad over a hundred percent. So that should just maybe a few pennies off of the thing. So, I mean, that's as good as you can get. You just don't get any better than that.
I know when the CLA varies a certain level, then they have, then they suggest to go for a reappraisal.
Yeah, if it goes to a hundred and twenty, or goes to eighty, that triggers an automatic appraisal, reappraisal.
All right.
So that's great news. I just wanted to share it with you.
Excellent. Oh, we got a letter from G and R Equipment notifying us that if we are ever in the need for a excavator, that they have one for rent, seventy-five dollars per hour without an operator, one twenty-five with an operator. They have a digging bucket with a thumb and a shaving bucket. So this is, I guess, for, if, if, if so needed.
Yeah.
Where is it from?
They are, Walpole, New Hampshire.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll share that with you, Mark.
And they bring it down? Do they transport it?
They just, it's a letter of introduction, who they are and what they have. Senior Solutions Annual Report Newsletter came in, that's available for people to take a look at, and it is also available online.
Oh, that's.
And then we have the state of Vermont Highway Division structured grant. The project that was completed. And it looks like, this is the one that we were paying for. We were.
Right, we.
Okay, we were reimbursed eighty thousand, forty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Which is ninety percent.
Which is ninety percent.
That's the box folder?
Yes.
It's the box folder. Okay.
Oh, so once a mark.
That's for you.
All right, this is for me, this is the dog survey. Also in the mail from Rescue Inc. We see January first was the invoice for two thousand nineteen, two thousand.
But there's a signature page, the next page for the contract.
Okay, so something I can sign. The rate is one thousand two hundred sixty-four dollars and forty-nine cents for Rescue Inc. to provide emergency medical services to our town of Brookline.
That's per month.
Per month.
So what is it?
What, what the number again? One thousand two hundred sixty-four dollars and forty-nine cents. This is similar to other.
Yeah.
We've done it fast. What do we got in there for our budget?
So that's a little bit lower than what we have in our budget.
What, I can.
They seem to, it there's, it seems to pretty much be flat from what it was last year.
Right, we didn't have the figures at the last.
We didn't have, we assumed a little bit of an increase, but we can actually lower that, back to.
So that line item could be reduced.
That line item could be reduced.
All right, so the line item for Rescue Inc. should be reduced based upon the contract for the, for the year. So is this, is okay for me to sign this?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll sign it and then print it.
I think the vice chair should sign it too, probably.
There's no room for him.
I don't like signing stuff anymore.
Yeah, there's two signature blocks on it.
No, Rescue Inc. where I do it.
Oh, okay. Then I, it's just the chair.
Okay, so I'll put this back for.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, I'll put this back to you. This describes the activities and things that they have, have in their fee schedule.
Should we stick a note on it, just for her to note that it's a change from?
Okay.
On the.
I'll put a note on there that it's been reduced from what we had in the line item.
Or something like that, just, she probably would figure that out anyway.
Okay, closes our two thousand nineteen certificate of highway miles. This is something that we, we need to come around every year.
That's what we get paid thirty-eight thousand dollars a year for.
This should go on an agenda to be signed next week after review. So we will add the certificate highway mileage.
It's gotta be done as a due date. I put on the front of the envelope. I think it's February.
Twenty.
Yep.
So this has to be reviewed.
So I guess I'd suggest we maybe put it on the agenda for February sixth instead.
Right, meanwhile.
Since it could.
Meanwhile, I'll redo it. February sixth.
You probably have to review it.
Highway miles.
Uh, I don't, I think basic, I don't know why you would have to put it on the next agenda. Why couldn't you just sign on for it now? It's basically the same mileage report that we do every year.
There's no.
Oh, okay.
I'm sure you didn't.
Double check that it's right.
Oh, okay, yep.
Make sure that there's, because, because there was, yeah. Because it's too thick to me just to say, okay. Structures, that was it for mail, okay. So now I wanna do the payroll and accounts payable.
We have to vote on that?
Yep, I gotta, I gotta look at this one now. And then I'll sign it. Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we approve payroll warrant number two thousand nineteen dash twenty-five in the amount of one thousand six hundred thirty-six dollars and thirty-nine cents. May I have a second?
Second.
A second, but, well, actually, Bruce seconded. Discussion, this was signed
All right.
already, David, but we will enter it into the minutes. All those in favor of approving this payroll, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed, so payroll warrant is officially accepted. I'd like to make a motion that we approve a counts payable warrant two thousand nineteen dash twenty-six in the amount of nine thousand two hundred ninety-two dollars and eighty-eight cents. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by David. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the counts payable warrant two thousand nineteen dash
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, in the amount of nine thousand two hundred ninety-two dollars and eighty-eight cents, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Accounts payable has also been approved. Okay. Set agenda for the next meeting, which is on January sixteenth, two thousand nineteen. Invited members of the public currently exist is Andy Shear to discuss the logging on the Wards property, and Jordan Chaitin is coming as the Brookline representative to Rescue Inc. We are also going to set the tax rate. We're going to finalize wording for any articles to be included in the town report for March. Those articles include the wheeled excavator, surplus, and recycling. We will also add to the February agenda reviewing the job description for property maintenance at Sunny Lane Daycare, and also for approving the highway mileage report for the state of Vermont for the February sixth meeting. Okay. I'll print this up, and if anybody has anything that they wanted to change on the agenda for the next meeting, let me know. Before I make a motion to adjourn, I'd like to wish Mr. Gankanza a very happy seventy-fifth birthday tomorrow. I wish you much health and happiness in this new year, and as always, we really appreciate all the work you do. You work very hard for the town.